Good evening and welcome to the March 9 meeting of the Finance Committee of the Northampton City Council. My name is Counselor David Murphy. I chair the committee. With me is Counselor Mary Ann LeBarge, Counselor Jesse Adams, and Counselor Maureen Carney. So I'm going to call the meeting to order and let you know that we are taking minutes of this meeting. And we are live on NCTV, and so it's also being recorded by NCTV. I'm going to ask Pam to call the role.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Counselor LeBarge?
Present.
And before we start a public hearing on the water rates, which is our main business for tonight, we have the election of a committee vice chair on the agenda. So I'll open the floor to nominations.
I'll make a nomination for Counselor-at-Large Jesse Adams.
Second.
Oh, I do have a second. All right. Are there any other nominations? Move to close nominations?
Move to close nominations.
All in favor of Counselor Adams as vice chair? Please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And now we need a motion to open a public hearing with regards to an order to establish water and sewer rates for FY 2017.
Make a motion to open up a public hearing.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So to start off, we're going to have the mayor make a presentation, because I see a lot of new faces here tonight, which is great. So the mayor's going to make a presentation on how we got where we are, and then we'll open it to public comment after the presentation's done. And if everybody can see the screens, the presentation includes a number of PowerPoint slides with information. And there's also a handout. I think the mayor actually has them now. So that if you can't see the PowerPoint, you're welcome to take a presentation and also take it home with you. So the mayor has the floor.
Good evening, members of the Finance Committee and members of the public. This is a presentation on the proposed FY 2017 water and sewer rates that I have recommended to the city council. Pam, if you could go to the first slide. So just to quickly give you a history of how we got here, as you may know, in November of 2014, following the reorganization of city government, the rate-setting authority was transferred from the former Board of Public Works to the mayor and city council, per my administrative order. In March of 2015, we held a public hearing on potential FY 2016 rates. We received a lot of excellent feedback on the rates, lots of great questions about the rate structure, the history of the rates, questions about whether there could be programs for low-income people, for providing rate relief. And so in April of 2015, I recommended to the council that we freeze the 2016 rates at the FY 2015 levels to allow us additional time for actually two things. Obviously, as I mentioned before, to do significant research on alternative rate structures, looking at conservation incentives, looking at low-income rate relief, et cetera. The other big item that was happening, because one of the things that we were discussing during that hearing was a series of significant capital investments that we needed to make in both the water and sewer systems. The DPW was in the process of finalizing and scheduling public forums on these two significant studies, a comprehensive wastewater management plan and a water supply system assessment management plan, which are sort of long, multi-year studies of both of these important infrastructure systems, helping us identify what are the short, near, and long-term needs of these systems. So the goal was to try to complete both of those things, which we have done. Next slide, please. So we did, in fact, commission a water and sewer rate study. We contracted with two well-known and well-experienced companies working in tandem, Raftellus Financial Consultants and Woodcock and Associates, to do an in-depth analysis of our current water and sewer rates. And we wanted them to not only look at the appropriateness of our current rate structures in comparison to some of our objectives for the rates, but also look at these large capital projects and help us develop a forecast of what those rates would need to be able to generate, rates and fees would need to be able to generate, to help us meet both the operating and capital needs of the system. So we were not only looking at the structure, but we were looking at the long-term financial forecast of the system. Next slide, please. We set some objectives, four main objectives, in trying to look at the rate structure. One was to look at the issue of conservation, promoting conservation. We wanted to figure a way to promote assistance to economically disadvantaged customers. We wanted to look at ways to improve equity among the various customer types. And of course, looking at these long-term projects, we wanted to be able to enhance revenue stability, have a stable revenue source. So those were the main objectives going into that study. Next slide. So I'm now going to turn it over to Jim Laurilla, our city engineer and the acting DPW director, to talk about some of those capital needs that went into that financial forecasting, as well as the financial forecasting itself. So I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jim Laurilla with the Public Works Department, as the mayor indicated. So one of the first things that we did with a rate study consultant is we took a lot of the information for key water capital projects that were identified in the Water Asset Management Plan, and we provided that information to the consultant to put within a financial plan that I'll talk about in a minute. So under some of the important water capital projects that we've identified, between FY 17 and FY 21, there's about $4 million in water line replacement projects that are scheduled. Some of the projects are listed there on Conn's, North Farms, North Maple, and Day Avenue. Hinckley Street and Damon Road are other projects that were slated to be done under the water line replacement program. A little bit further out in 2021, we have reservoir dam repairs, which is a large project that's coming up to complete important repairs to the Ryan Reservoir and the West Whately Reservoir, which are two of this city's three main water supply reservoirs. The Ryan Reservoir is about 720 million gallons, and the dam is about an 80-foot-high dam, 940 feet long with a concrete spillway. It's up in Whately and has a number of things that need to be done to repair that. So that project's slated in 2021. And the next slide, you'll see key sewer capital needs. These are projects that were identified during the comprehensive wastewater management planning process that we're in the process of concluding. At the top, you'll see from FY 17 to FY 21, again, we have sewer line replacement projects and sewer system studies, about $2.5 million that are budgeted for those, including sewer line replacements for Day Avenue and Hinckley Street, are projects that are coming up. And then other projects that are still being identified by the department using the report. And the biggest capital need on the sewer side, and the water side really, is upgrades that are necessary to the wastewater treatment plant. And those are scheduled between FY 17 and FY 21, close to $30 million worth of improvements during those few years. Many basic treatment processes at the plant are really beyond their design life, and they need to be replaced so that we'll be able to meet Clean Water Act discharge permit requirements to protect the safety of the water in the Connecticut River. The plant's very old. Some of the treatment plant dates back to 1950s. The majority of the plant equipment dates to 1970s. So clearly, a situation where upgrades need to be done simply to replace equipment that's necessary to meet our discharge permit. So if you were to take those capital projects and put them on a bar graph, it would look something like this. The darker blue is the sewer system needs, and you can see that some of the larger spikes there in the timeframe shown on this graph are related to capital projects that I just identified mainly at the wastewater treatment plant. The lighter blue projects are the ones slated for the water system, with the 2020 number being the year that the dam projects would be done. So you can see, as you go over time, the capital needs vary significantly from year to year. So what we needed to do is, we go to the next slide, is we worked with the rate consultant to determine a water financial plan in terms of the best way to finance the capital projects for the water system, using enterprise fund money. So the financial plan accounts for different elements that are shown in this graph. The blue, the dark blue, is the operating expenses, or normal operating expenses to run a water system. The lighter blue is existing debt service. The majority of that would be related to the construction of the water treatment plant, and that goes on a number of years. And then the green is proposed debt service, and that comes out about five years from now when the repairs to the dam will be done. So it gives you a sort of sense of what those things are. And then the yellow indicates cash reserves that are used to fund some of the projects that come up. So it's really a balancing and a smoothing out of the overall financial needs for the water system. And that's sort of the average line that's shown going across the years. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see we did something similar for the sewer financial plan. So the same elements, except you'll see that there's a lot of additional proposed debt service, which is the green. So unlike the water system, because of all the needs at the wastewater treatment plant, bonds will be used to pay for a lot of the improvements that are made at the plant. So the debt service increases over time to pay for those large projects at the wastewater plant. So these were the financial plans that we developed with assistance of the consultant and working with the city's finance director. So on the next slide, the mayor will take over and talk about the rate structure.
So thank you very much, Jim. So the current water rate structure, as you may know, all customers are charged the same volumetric rate, regardless of the type, the size, or the amount of water used. There's also a very small fixed charge, which is assessed per bill, which recovers very little of the water system's fixed costs. We also do not have any private fire protection charges, which is something that is found in many other cities. The FY 2016 flat water rate is $5.58 per CCF. You're going to see that term CCF throughout the presentation. That stands for, it's basically 100 cubic feet, centum cubic feet. But that is actually the measure that's used in the water industry and in municipal water primarily. So that's where that CCF number that you'll start to see later in the presentation. We can go to the next slide. The sewer rate structure, all customers are charged for sewer services based on 100% of metered consumption, except for a small number of large industrial customers. We have five large industrial customers that have specialized manufacturing processes, and they have a specialized meter to capture what they're actually sending into the wastewater stream. And they pay for 100% based on that meter. But all customers right now, you get your water bill, you have a consumption rate, and that rate of consumption, 100%, is multiplied by the sewer rate to come up with what your sewer bill is. And that consumption rate right now is $6.08 per CCF of metered water consumption. We heard a little bit about that during the public hearings. In addition to hearing about the flat rate on the water side, we did hear from folks who talked about the fact that not all 100% of our water goes into the waste stream, that there's water that's used for other purposes that don't actually go into the wastewater stream. So if we go to the next slide. So the key recommendations that are embedded in this proposed rate structure, again, provide economic assistance to customers who qualify based on current tax exemption criteria. We wanted to create a two-tiered water rate structure for small meters. We wanted to implement a larger fixed charge. That's, again, referenced earlier, a charge that would help us capture more of the fixed costs of operating the system, not just, because regardless of whether you turn on your water or don't turn on your water, we still need to maintain the infrastructure, and we need to, there's all the fixed costs that go into running that. We also wanted to create a new private fire protection charge, which I can talk about later. And we are recommending that we shift from that 100% rate of water consumption to an 80% rate of metered water consumption. Again, out of recognition of the fact that not all customers are using, 100% of the water that comes out of their faucets are going into sewers or drains. So those are the recommendations from which we use to correct, to create the rates that I'm putting forward. Next slide. So these are the water and sewer rates that we've put forward to you in the council order. These are the volumetric rates. And you'll see that on the water rates up above, we have created two categories, customers with a 1-inch meter or smaller, and then customers with a meter larger than 1 inch. Within those two customer classes, on the smaller-sized meters, there's actually a tier-one consumption rate and a tier-two consumption rate. The 0 to 16 CCF, the customer in that smaller category will pay $4.73 per CCF. So that's for the first 16 CCF that that customer uses. Anything over 16 CCF is charged at the rate of $6.21 per CCF. Now, moving to the customers with meters larger than 1 inch, there is a flat consumption rate of $6.09 per CCF, which some pointed out in the last hearing, and it's correct. You'll note that that number is actually lower than the higher tier-two rate of the smaller customer, and we'll talk about some of the effects of that later in the presentation. On the sewer rate side, we're recommending $7.52 per CCF based on 80% of metered water consumption. So again, you'll take that, you'll take whatever your water usage is and multiply by 80% before calculating against the sewer rate to come up with what your sewer charge would be. And for most customers, we're, are non-metered, for the metered customers, it's strictly based on that meter times $7.52. Next slide. Now I wanted to talk about that 16 CCF conservation rate, because I know there were some questions about that at the last meeting. Why do we use that as a conservation rate? Where did we get that number? Why don't we use a different number? And this is actually derived from the DEP and from national standards about water consumption. So just to take you through the math, and you can kind of follow along, the DEP recommends, recommended goal of daily individual consumption, that means each one of us in our daily lives, is 65 gallons per person per day. So if you then take that 65 gallons per person per day and you multiply it by the average household size, so the average household size is actually 2.07 persons per household, you come up with 134.6 gallons per day for an average household. We then take that and convert it to the CCF, which is dividing it by 7.48 gallons, which is equivalent to 1 cubic feet, and that's where we come up with the 18 cubic feet. We then take that and multiply it by the 90 days and a quarter, because that's per day, so you multiply it by 90 days per quarter, and that gives you a number of 1,620 cubic feet per quarter. We then take that and we divide it by 100 to get to CCFs. And so that's where we get to the 16 CCFs per quarter. So when we set that and when we worked with the consultants to arrive at that and trying to think about what is a reasonable target that smaller customers should use, we wanted to go with what was sort of an accepted standard that's put forth by our environmental regulator. So that's where the 16 CCF comes from. There's a little graphic on that slide you may or not be able to see. It just shows you that, you know, 100 cubic feet or 1 CCF equals 748 gallons of water, and then it sort of gives you some ideas about how much gallons, how many gallons of water people use for various household activities. So that's where we get the 16 CCF conservation rate from. If you go to the next slide. So in addition to the volumetric rates which we're putting forward, we are also making, the DPW is, with my approval, will be updating the fixed charges that we currently charge per quarter based on meter size. This, again, was one of the things that the consultant mentioned, that currently the fixed charges are so low that they really, they derive a very small portion of the overall revenue. Currently, the current, the charges that are in place right now derive about 0.54% of the overall revenue. We're recommending making slight increases to those to bring that up to about 2%. Still not significant, but it's still, it's definitely, it's a recognition that there are these fixed costs of operating the system that are, that we have to incur regardless of the consumption one way or the other. This is actually the component of the program with which we want to insert the affordability program on this fixed fee side. And so as you see on the slide, for customers in the city who currently qualify for a low-income exemption on either their real estate taxes or the Community Preservation Act, they will automatically be exempted from this fixed charge on their utility bill. So this will not only lower those customers' bill, but it also removes the only portion of the bill that the customer doesn't control through water usage. And this is actually, when we looked around, this is actually somewhat common in utilities in general. This is sort of, this is also the system that electric companies use. If you qualify for a low-income rate, they typically exempt you from the fixed charge side of electric usage. So this is both the fixed charges and also talking about the affordability program that we're trying to build in. Next slide. So people just may not have a sense of the customer breakdown. We added these slides after the last meeting to kind of show people the distinction between the universe of customers who are 1 inch or smaller, or meters, customers that have a meter larger than 1%. You can see it graphically illustrated here. 95% of the customers in the system are 1-inch meter or smaller. 5% are larger than 1%. And as you'll see later, it doesn't really, it doesn't, it does not break down along commercial residential lines like we sometimes talk about in taxes, because there can be, there can be large facilities that don't use a lot of water that have a small meter size serving their facility. So it's not really a, it's not really tied to that. It's really just about the size of the infrastructure serving the customers. If you go to the next slide, we have a further breakdown, which breaks it down into its component parts, you know, from 5/8ths to 3/4ths to 8, all the way up to 8-inch lines. And you can see those numbers get even smaller. But that just kind of gives you a breakdown that we didn't provide in the previous presentation. But I think it's at least helpful to give you a sense of the magnitude of the customer base. Next slide, please. So the other, the other program that we are going to implement, again, this is a fixed charge, and it's a charge that recognizes that there are, there is special infrastructure required to a select group of customers to provide, it says fire protection, but basically it's a fire line. It's a separate fire line. It's an un-metered, separate fire line to a facility that may have a fire suppression system. And again, we looked around at other communities, and this is a charge that is, that is quite common in other communities. And you can see the charges begin at the 2-inch or larger, and it's a $10 per quarter charge, and all the way up to the 10-inch line. So that shows you what the fire protection charge would be. Again, these are charges that we are going to be implementing at an administrative level. These are not part of what's being recommended as part of the volumetric rates. But I'm trying to show all of it so you can see the whole universe of the rate structure. Again, another effort to not have our rates totally reliant on volumetric consumption rates, but to also have some fixed charges to acknowledge the fixed costs of running the system. Next slide. So what we've done is taken some, the impacts of a water bill, looking at a quarterly bill, and these are just generic slides that show customer impacts of water. And so you start at the left-hand column, and that gives you the CCF usage, all the way from 3 CCF all the way up to 2,000 CCF. And then we've got various meter sizes on there, because the meters, depending on your meter size, there's a, there's a different fixed charge. But if you take, we highlighted the yellow one because that's really a, sort of an average customer usage number, 12 CCF. It's approximately 9,000 gallons per quarter. We looked at that, and so if you walk, if you go across the slide, you'll see a 12 CCF customer with a 5/8ths-inch meter, which again is by far the most common-sized meter in the city. The FY 16 charge for just water would be $67.96 per quarter. Under, in FY 27, with both the rate change and the fixed fee change, it's $69.40. So that change is $1.44 per quarter for that particular hypothetical customer. And you can then see, if you move over with the income discount, so if you take away the fixed charge, if it's a customer who qualifies for the income discount, they'll actually be paying less in 2017 than they paid in 2016. It's an $11.20 per quarter savings on their quarterly bill. So you can see that the, how the income discount would play out in a scenario like that. We don't carry the income discount much above the 1-inch meters, because then we start to get into the much larger, there could be folks who are with 1-inch or larger that would qualify. I don't know, but we were just trying to show typical residential use. So that's the water impact. If we go to the next slide, we'll show you the sewer impact. Same scenario where we've taken, you know, the sort of the hypothetical CCF usage. The next column is then you have to do the math to go to 80% of that CCF, 80% of your water consumption, to arrive at the number that'll be used to calculate the sewer rate. And then it shows the meter size, but that's just because it carries back to the, to the CCF, how the CCF was derived. So for, again, for that, for that typical residential customer with a 12 CCF consumption, 5/8ths-inch meter, their sewer bill would be this year $72.96 per quarter. In FY 2017, it would be $72.19, so it goes down 77 cents per quarter. You're seeing the impact of, you know, the rate is going up, but then you're also switching to the 80% calculation. So it actually creates, in most cases, a reduction on the sewer side for most customers. So that's sewer. We did, this is the combined. So now this takes both of those two charts, melds them together, and looks at the overall water and sewer, overall water and sewer quarterly bill comparison. I'll use the one in yellow, but you've got all the other scenarios. Again, a 12 CCF-consuming customer with a 5/8ths-inch meter, their combined would be $140.92 per quarter. In FY 2017, that would actually go up to $141.59, or a 67 cent per quarter change. And the income discount, which would then eliminate the fixed charge for water, would actually then lower it to $128.95, which is, again, a savings of $11.97 per quarter for that particular customer class. So that shows you what the combined water and sewer impact would be in those hypotheticals. So I know we got a lot of comments last time about, specifically concerned about business customers, and we were wondering how this plays out for various, because there was a sense, I think, that just universally, this was going to have a negative impact on business customers. So what we tried to do is we tried to select kind of a cross-section of well-known, well-recognized local businesses in Northampton and Florence, and we ran these same scenarios. And what we did is, because we didn't want to go through three separate slides, we did a combined water and sewer. So basically, it's this last slide where we take the combined water and sewer, and then we actually apply it. We looked back at a total year's consumption, actually FY 15 consumption, and we came up with an average per-quarter consumption for these customers. These are public records, so I'm not disclosing any information that's not a public record. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see what we've come up with. So we took, I'll just run through them quickly. Cooper's Corner, the Faces TD Bank Building, they're on the same meter together, so we can't separate them out. The New Fairfield Inn, the Florence Barber Shop, the Florence Hardware, Florence Pizza, Joe's Cafe, Main Street Cleaners, the Northampton Brewery, Paradise Copy, Spalletto, Stop &amp; Shop, Sylvester's and Thorne's. And we ran them through, and you can see the various meter size, meter sizes for all of them. And then you can see Cooper's Corner, which I assume folks at home know is, you know, Rich Cooper's grocery slash liquor store slash deli in the heart of Florence. They would see an increase quarterly of $44.36, applying this standard to it. And then you can kind of go down. And then you can kind of go down the line. The Faces TD Bank Building, 120.60 per quarter, all the way down, you know, Joe's Cafe, $71.96 per quarter change in their bill. The thing, the thing also to think about, and I should have mentioned this in the earlier slides, is that what you don't see happening, because what, because in the past, you would have a fixed volumetric rate, which represented 99.6% of the revenue of the system. So if you are going to do a 2% increase in water rates, it would basically fall completely on that volumetric rate. You basically raise the volumetric rate by, to generate 2% of revenue. And, and on the, on the sewer side, our goal is to generate about 3% revenue, again, to match the model. But that doesn't play out that way when you run these scenarios, because of the mixed rates and the different tiered rate systems. So the other thing I wanted to talk about, because I think it's, and I actually did this before I came, because I thought it was interesting, in addition to looking at these impacts and seeing what they are, people, this came up at the last hearing, the tiered rates people got, I think, a little bit hung up on, because you see the tier-one rates, you know, which are $4.73 for the first 16 CCF. And then you get to the tier-two consumption, which is $6.21 per CCF. But then when you move up into the, the 5% larger meter class, it's actually that lower number of $6.09 per CCF. So I just, and when you think about it, well, so what I did, just because I'm not, I'm a visual person, I need to kind of play with things, I actually took my water, my water bill, my water characteristics of my bill. I have a five-eighths-inch meter, and I looked at, and I basically put the Northampton Brewery's water consumption. So if I consumed as much water as the Northampton Brewery consumed in a quarter, my quarterly water charge as a residential homeowner would be $3,180.68 per quarter. If you run that through the brewery's metrics, they have a one-and-a-half, you know, inch meter, and they're paying the different rate. And now I'm only looking at the water consumption here. I'm not looking at the fixed rates or any of the other stuff, just the water rate. That quarterly charge is actually lower. It's $3,142.44. So it's a, it's a, you know, it's eventually, when you get out far enough, that 16 CCF, you lose that 16 CCF savings at the higher level. So I think there's a concern that we were trying to shift too much toward business. But if you actually take that lower flat rate in the, in the large class, and run it out and run scenarios against, if a residential customer used that water, being charged the smaller customer rates, they would actually pay more. So that was just something that I wanted to add to this slide, which I think shows you how these different scenarios play out. So if you go to the next slide, so as I mentioned, and this is where I was doing all these scenarios, and I hope people at home will take their quarterly bill, because we do have a calculator set up, and we've got actually a sample, it's actually my bill, I don't know why they blacked out my name, but that is actually my bill from the last quarter. And there's two numbers circled, and you basically put in the size of your meter, you tell us whether you're on sewer or not, and then you put in the cubic feet usage that's on your bill. Mine is 2,100. And when you put that in, it basically converts it to CCF for you, and then it tells you, this is what your fixed charge will be, this is what your water charge will be, this is what your quarterly sewer charge, and this is your total water and sewer charges. So you, folks at home can take their last quarter bill under the current rates, run this scenario, and they can actually see what the change in rates will, you know, will impact in terms of their particular situation. And again, this, this effort is an effort, and I think that's what we're trying to combine in the, in the presentation, is we have these major capital needs that we need to fund. We have this 1970s-era wastewater treatment plant that we have to make major upgrades to. We have an ongoing need to replace water lines and sewer lines. We have the dam repairs up at our two reservoirs that we have to work on. So we're trying to figure out a way to create a smooth glide path that isn't going to have these huge herky-jerky rate changes. And we've also tried to build a rate structure that is sensitive to the different types of customers, the different types of water usage, and that recognizes that there are fixed costs in the system that currently aren't recognized as a, as a revenue generator in the current system. And we want to try to build that into the, to the new system. Finally, let's go to the next slide. At the last meeting, Mr. Lorla mentioned a study that was done in 2012. It was released, it's called Massachusetts Water Infrastructure Toward Financial Stability. It was a 2012 report. It's many pages long, but I just took this little excerpt out of one of the sections. And I just want to read the quote. "This was basically a study of water infrastructure across Massachusetts, what the state of it is, what the condition of it is, how much people are paying, how much people are planning, how much people are investing." So quote, "For a service that has a very high societal value, where failures will cause great inconveniences, loss of business, and jeopardize the public health, we often fail to pay enough for the service. Ironically, many of us see the value in high monthly fees for internet or cable service. As a point of comparison, water rates on an annualized basis compare to the following rates paid for other community commonly-used utilities." And then it points to this chart on the right. The chart's a little bit dated. It's, it's from Kiplinger's 2009, but they basically looked at average, nationally-average rates, and then they looked at what those bills represented as a percentage of median household income. So, you know, water and sewer rates on average represent, you know, water 0.52% of median income, sewer 0.75, cell phones between 0.92% and 1.10%, cable TV and internet 1.28%, and then electricity and, you know, all the way up to 1.2. In a 2010, in 2010, the ITT Corporation conducted a survey of American voters concerning the value of water. 69% of those polled agreed with the statement, "I generally take my access to clean water for granted." A full 95% of American voters polled in the same survey value water over any other services they receive, including heat and electricity. I, I've mentioned, I've mentioned this in conversations I've had to people, and I thought this was sort of an interesting takeaway from that report, that really does look at, we, we all pay for a lot of utilities in our, in our, as part of our life. You know, again, electric, cable TV with all the hundreds and hundreds of channels and pay-per-view. Many of us have cell phones or smartphones with monthly service plans, et cetera. And yet, when we talk about having clean water, having working sanitary sewage, we sometimes don't think about that in the same term. So this was interesting to see this called out in a report. So that's the last slide of the updated report, and I will, and I will either answer questions, myself and Mr. Lorla can answer questions, or we can open it up to public.
All right. Well, I think what we'll do first is committee questions, because we might root out something that would get the public inspired for a question. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lorla, could you come up and grab two adjoining seats up here? NCTV'd have an easier ti, if you're answering people, they have an even easier time taking your pictures if you're over here.
I'd prefer to stay at the podium if that's okay.
What if there's a member of the public at the podium?
I will step away from it.
Okay.
Rather not, I, I don't want to, you know, that's the council's deus, I'll stay over here.
Okay, we'll just hope NCTV's going to push the buttons quickly. So questions, first of all, from the committee. Council of Arts.
Yes, Mayor. What did it, what was the cost of us hiring that consultant? Because I have been asked about that.
Certainly, yes. I think the total, we had signed a total contract cost of about $29,000 was the, was the maximum contract. I think to date, we've, about $21,000 is what we've paid so far. And I would tell you, for those of you who met Mr. Woodcock and Mr. Fox in January, I would, I would ask you folks, their video presentation that they did to the council in January, and their presentation is on the website, as well as their credentials. And, you know, after that hearing that we had a year ago, one of the things I started looking around was looking at other communities that had been doing rate changes, and, and many, most of them hired people that are expert in this field, who have the, who have the ability to be able to kind of take a customer base, drill down into it, look at three, four, or five years of customer usage. And also, they understand the full breadth of, of different practices around, around the, around the country. And I, if you recall during their presentation, they, they mentioned that they had looked at lots of different potential, you know, potential different structures, but this, the one that, the ones that they recommended to us really seemed to fit best with our profile as a, as a city.
Second.
Yes.
And I know I had gone to Susan about a year ago, two years ago, and to Joan Seraphin. What is the actual procedure, Mayor, to qualify for a low-income exemption? I've been told, well, once somebody applies, no matter, it could be two years, four years, then something comes up again, and they use the same form. To me, that is not the right way to go. To me, people's incomes do change. Somebody in the family, there could be an inheritance, somebody could also retire from another agency, and there's more income. So how is that actually checked? I'm being asked these questions.
Yep, no, it's a, it's a fair question. So your question is, how often do we certify that, that a customer who's come in, well, like a tax, someone who comes into the assessor, provides their, their income information, and gets certified that they're eligible for an exemption on their real estate taxes? You're asking, how often do they, does that get monitored?
Or anything?
Yeah.
Like the stormwater utility fee?
Yeah. Well, the stormwater, the stormwater fee, I suppose people can come in separately for that, but oftentimes, if it's already, if they already have the real estate, it automatically applies. But you have a...
They have to apply every year.
They do have to apply every year.
They have to apply every year.
Yes.
And they have to show that proof.
And the assessor is...
With your, you know, income tax and so forth.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I mean, this is a...
We use a state form.
There's a state form that they fill out every year, and they're obviously, you know, attesting to this information, and the assessor meets with them privately to, to review it and discuss it. So, and it's sort of a, it's a, it is a private process, because they're revealing, you know, very sensitive information.
Exactly, but my main concern was to make sure that, because they've done it one time, they don't use that same income all the time.
Okay. No, that's, that's definitely...
That it's verified.
A valid concern, and, and I will bring that back to Joan Seraphin.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Councilor Adams.
So, following up on her question about the cost of the consultants, there's about, about $21,000 for both?
It's combined.
Combined.
They were, they, they worked collaboratively on the project. They, we sought quotes, and they worked, they, they sort of, as he may have described in the meeting, they've ten, they were, once worked separately, and now they've sort of combined and work together on the project. So that was the total for both of them, for the total contract.
I saw, I think it was on Open Checkbook, that Raff Tellis, a payment to Raff Tellis about $6,216. Were they paid equally, approximately in the end?
What happens is they submit, they submitted bills to us at different steps along the process. So we, we would meet with them, work on different aspects of the process. We typically don't pay, if, if we, well, this was a contract that had a maximum amount, and so, which we would not exceed, or you'd have to do a new contract, et cetera. So we, typically in a contract situation like that, you, there's an invoice submitted, and then that's, that goes through our financial process, and then they're paid. So that's why you'll see, you know, a $6,000 invoice at some point in the process. If you go back historically, you'll probably see other Raff Tellis payments on the Open Checkbook system.
And you worked with them over the course of a, of a year approximately?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, last August, I believe, we awarded the contract. I think that's correct, last August. And, and so we, we awarded that to them, we got all of that started, and then we began meeting with them on a, on a regular basis, and we first had to do a massive sort of data dump. I mean, they basically asked us to provide them all of the, all of the relevant data about our customers. Do you want to describe that, or, or am I covering it okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, you're doing, doing fine. So the project started in August, and it did start with a data dump. We were provided all the information about the capital projects, from the capital planning, and then all of our operational expenses, and our budgetary information for both water and sewer. So they used that information in the preparation of the financial models that we talked about.
Was, was the $21,000 in the FY16 budget?
It was part of our, it was in our, we used it actually from Water and Sewer Enterprise funds. The two shared the expenses of it, because it was something to directly benefit the, it was a project specifically designed for the Water and Sewer Enterprise. They are share, they're both sharing the cost of that, yeah. Out of our...
So does that mean it wasn't expressly in the 2016?
Out of our, we had a, we have an engineering...
We have an engineering...
And design services line item in our budget for these kinds of projects, when we have, you know, when it's, 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 there's a certain amount in there, so that if we have to do design and engineering services, for, if we have projects that can't be handled by our inside engineers or designers, and so that's the funds that we use for this.
Any more questions?
Another one, Councilor Adams?
I'm wondering how the new rate structure would impact and change the distribution, the distribution borne by the, the different classes now. So you have residential, commercial, tax-exempt, and City of Northampton, which, which may or may not be actual separate classes. But, but I'm wondering if we can have, if we can, if we can see over the last, you know, year or two, with our current structure, if we could see how, though it's, it's a single rate, how, how it's, how it's played, how it's been borne out? So how, what, what the different categories of user have paid? And if we could have a comparison of what they will pay based on projections over the next several years, over the next three to five years, I think that would be helpful to see, because obviously, the new structure doesn't distinguish between what types of user only, only, but only on usage.
It also doesn't distinguish between commercial and residential, so...
That's, that's what I just said, usage. That's, that's what I just said.
No, I just mean actual user type. I mean, you have Cooper's Corner, which has a one-inch meter, so it's in the smaller class under our new scenario. It's not a larger class. And then you have some other anomalies. So it's really not, one of the problems with looking at the large, with looking at different classes, and why you can't have a commercial and residential, is there's really, you know, on the, on a residential side, there's a very common sort of, everybody uses the same amount, not uses the same amount, we take showers, we wash our clothes, it's that sort of home use. There's not really a defining characteristic of commercial water use. So there, it's very difficult to, that's why there's, that's why we just use a flat rate on that system. So we can certainly, if, I mean, and in fact, the last slides, or the hypothetical slides does show you what the current rate structure generates in terms of a fee, and then it shows you what it generates under the new fee structure. We can try to, we could certainly run some other scenarios on that to show you what that is. You know, we could certainly do that.
Yeah, because, you know, I, I want to see what, if there's a, what shift there will be in burden, if, even if it's difficult, I'm sure, I would assume it can be done, to see if, you know, what the, what the change in burden will be for the business community. And I understand that, 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 I mean, I guess it could be difficult, because the rate itself doesn't distinguish between what kind of user. But I would like to see that.
I mean, that's why we ran this scenario.
I understand that, but I understand you used individual businesses.
Yeah.
I understand that, but I'm, but I'm wondering about the entire class, the business community, because, because I've said publicly repeatedly that my concern is about the business community. So it's help, it's certainly helpful to see those individuals, absolutely helpful, because that gives us a sense. But I'm wondering what, you know...
But if I take an average of the, like, if I were to just take that universe and average them all out, and say it's going to be an average increase, I don't know how representative that would be. I don't know if that would give you, just because there is such a distinction between the various classes. But, and again, our system isn't set up as commercial, residential, it's set up by meter size. So that's why we tried to pick, we, we went in looking for a specific address... So that's why we tried to pick, we went in looking for specific addresses of places we knew were businesses so that we could call those out. I can, I can talk with our team, and maybe Jim can shed some light on this. He's an engineer.
Yeah, actually, the mayor's doing a pretty good job describing it. We actually did look with our financial administrator in the Public Works Department about trying to break it down in the way that you're asking for, Counselor Adams, and the way that our utility billing system is set up. We're not, we're not actually tracking usage and things based on a nonprofit or commercial sector or residential. We don't have that type of classification within the current billing system. So there's really no easy way to pull out system-wide data that you're looking for. And that's why we went to the, sort of the specific examples to try to illuminate what the impacts would be on businesses that people are familiar with. So across the whole system, we can't do it based on the way our utility billing system is set up. So I don't know what to say.
So you could compare specific businesses like you did here, but as a business class?
Right.
It's hard to do.
Universally, we don't have access to that data because things aren't...
It's not quoted that way.
Right.
One more?
I can also add that I did meet with the, I did meet with the CFO of Smith College and their, I'm not sure what her title is now, Vice President for something. And we did talk about the, we did go through the water and sewer rates, it was part of a meeting that we had. So I did brief them on it. They're obviously one of our largest, well, they're tax exempt, but they're obviously not exempt from water and sewer rates. So they have all the methodology information, and they, you know, they're, you know, they have access to the calculator, so I think they're going to be able to go through. And we actually did run some of this, we did run a few scenarios. We didn't put them on here because we were focused on business, but we did, to just by way of example, we did pull up like a dorm. And, you know, we took a dorm, a dormitory and just looked at what the impacts would be. So we did run a few scenarios like that, but, but we've given them all that information, so they'll be able to run that data. So, so that's my, I guess that's, it's very difficult to do that global comparison that you want.
But, you know, for, for our tax rate, for example, we have a, we have a single rate for both residential, commercial. And we know that it's something like 80, 20, 70, 30...
But there's a residential class, there's a, there's a commercial class.
It does truly, yeah, it's classified that.
It's classified that way specifically. And that's what DOR requires. So that's not how we classify, that's not how we classify our system. So if we were going to switch to a system like that, which I, that's not really, again, it gets difficult to use a commercial class because commercial, you could see from that breakdown that not all commercial customers use water the same way. So it's hard, you know, comparing a bookstore to a laundromat to a brewery, it doesn't really make sense. So you would literally have to go through all 9,000 records individually and try to cross-reference the address and try to then determine which ones are businesses. So, and I don't know that it would give you much data.
Could you do like everybody with over a 2-inch meter, which would clearly leave out all the residences?
What's that?
Could you do, could you compare everybody over a 2-inch meter now with their current rate?
Certainly, yeah. And we have a, and we, you know, we have a 2-inch meter size, we had some 2-inch meter sizes in there, and we had 2-inch meter, you know, hypotheticals as well. But I suppose we could, I think we could do that, right?
Yeah, because I don't think there are many residences with a 2-inch service, so that might be a...
Unless it's a...
A way to approximate.
Unless it's a bigger, bigger house.
Again, I don't think we can pull up the number of gallons used by everybody who has a 2-inch meter and up in a, in a year period.
Okay.
In order to prepare the table with the local businesses that the mayor described, we had to go to each customer account to do that. So there's no universal way even for the 2-inch meters, Counsel Murphy, to say, okay, all 139, however many 2-inch meters we have, what the total consumption is, and figure out averages that way. You know, we have, the utility billing system at this city's used for a long time, was set up to do one thing, and granted, there, we're making changes now, and it's not, it's not set up in a way to give us the data that you're asking for. It could be in the future, we probably answer these questions pretty easily in the future, but for now, things were never set up that way, and there was no need for them really to be set up in that fashion.
You have more questions, all right.
The, the slides that show the increases for the businesses, those are helpful, but my concern is that our rates are, I think, comparatively high to begin with compared to some of our neighboring communities. And the projection, the proposals, well, I've heard that, that the rates are going to go up 5% per year. So I'm wondering, my concern is that'll make us less competitive in attracting businesses, or it might be difficult in retaining businesses. So I'm wondering if we've done any sort of comparison on not only the increases on that slide...
Yeah.
But our rates, and future rates being that they're going to go up 5% per year, and on top of that, rates tend to be higher.
I just want to be clear, the revenue, the revenue chart says what we're trying to achieve is 2% water growth per year in revenue, and, and 3% growth in sewer revenue per year. That doesn't mean the rates will go up. Everybody's bill's going to go up 3% and 2%. There's different, you know, it depends on a lot of multiple variables. It's not just like, okay, take your rate and times it by 2%, and then add that. It's not, that's not how it'll work. So I just want to be clear of what that means. We are trying to build a glide path that creates that much revenue, but it's also through a combination of fixed charges as well as, as well as the volumetrics. So that's number one. Number two, and I know we talked about this last time, it's very difficult to compare water bills and sewer bills from community to community. So Springfield, the City of Springfield, for example, and this kind of is, you know, Northampton is kind of a tweener community, like we're, we're not a big city, but we're not a small town. We're sort of a, you know, we're a small city of 30,000. When you look at our infrastructure, our water and sewer infrastructure, so Springfield has like a reservoir system, they have a huge reservoir, and some backup reservoirs in Ludlow, they have dams, they have pumping stations, they have a very similar setup to us. And then they have, you know, miles and miles of service lines. The difficulty is the number of gallons and the number of customers they have that they're servicing through that infrastructure is exponentially larger than us. We're still, we're still maintaining an infrastructure like that, as you can see by, you know, we're having to make these investments in our reservoirs. But we have a small customer base. So the per capita costs of our customers versus a Springfield customer are higher to maintain that system. Then you go to a smaller system like East Hampton, which again, is a much smaller population, a much less complicated water system. They don't have a reservoir-type system, they have an underground well system that serves their community, a much different level of infrastructure. Do they have a water treatment plan? They do have a water treatment plan, obviously on a smaller scale than ours. But so that's the difficulty of comparing, you know, why are the rates in Springfield different than the rates in East Hampton, different than rates in Northampton? I will say that when you look at our, you know, in terms of a business side, you know, we're trying to provide, you know, clean water, you know, good sewage, et cetera. We're also providing other incentives to businesses that put us far and above, in a better position than any other community in the valley, in terms of, you know, our tax rate, that, that single tax rate that we have. And I think I showed a slide at the combined budget meeting that showed where our tax rate puts us, which is really one of the lowest tax, commercial tax rates in western Massachusetts. And we're in like the lowest, you know, we're like in the bottom quartile of commercial tax rates in Massachusetts, like in the 200s. So there's also that that you have to factor in as well, in terms of infrastructure.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
One more?
Well, I'm still on this question, then I have another.
Do you want to get to the public?
Right.
Yeah.
But I also have some...
Let's try and wrap it up so we can hear from the public.
So, I mean, I understand that different communities have different challenges and obstacles and situations with respect to water and sewer, but with respect to comparing bills, it's actually quite easy. I mean, if you're a business coming to the city, you look at the bill and it's not complex at all for them to take a look at it and make a decision based on, not just that, but variety of factors, that being one of them. So...
But I would, I guess I would say to you that if I go, if I go into a...
That's why...
A fully-owned store and I see a price for something versus I go into a national chain or a larger operation...
That's why I'd like to see comparisons from neighboring communities, particularly that, that's absolutely terrific that we have a relatively low tax rate and a single rate. But I'd like to know of the other communities, because there are many that have a single rate as well, I'd like to know of those communities, which of those communities have, you know, a rate structure such as the one we're proposing as opposed to the rate structure compared to the, you know, the one we have as opposed to the one we're proposing, and, you know, but have the other things as well. I mean, there, you know, we also have a variety of other things like, you know, the Community Preservation Act and, and various other things. So it's, I think, you know, I think that overall affordability for a business, it's more than just saying we have a single tax rate, we're affordable, come to Northampton. I just don't think it's that simple. But I'll move on from that point.
I would actually, why don't you hold on, because we really did this to hear more from the public. So we can continue your questions later, we can stay for the evening. But I want to let the public get up and speak for a minute, because we really had the public hearing to get them here. So what I might do as a caveat, I'm going to, for the people whose names I have, I'm going to announce your name and address. When we get to the point where you're not on the list, please give us your name and address when you come up. And please, any questions you have for the mayor, Mr. Lord, or please run them through the chair. Don't get involved in a back and forth with the mayor or the finance director, or the TPW director. So the first person I have on my list is Chip Parsons, Mill Valley Road in Northampton, if, Hadley, Mill Valley Road in Hadley. But you have farmland, correct? And you're, and you're actually the Chair of the Northampton Ag Commission?
I'm a member.
You're a member of the Ag Commission. Do you want to come up and ask what questions you...
I apologize, because I'm, we have a 7 o'clock meeting across the hall with Mr. Fiden. But my question, or what I wanted to ask, was there any rate reduction being considered for agriculture, which is done in many communities surrounding us? We, we all know the importance of water, obviously, and, but ag runs on small margins, and, and, like I said, many communities have a reduced rate, and I just wanted to have that considered. I mean, you got the community gardens, you got Smith School, you got all of us that farm. It impacts quite a few people, and the city has been a good, strong supporter of agriculture, and we'd like that to continue. So I just want to make that point.
Mr. Mayor, you want to address this?
Thank you very much for coming. And I know he's got to get to his meeting. Yeah. That's something we can certainly take a look at. It was not, you know...
In the initial calculation?
In terms of large-scale, you know, water usage for agriculture, it was not something that was identified as something that needed, that was to call out, but we can try to get some more data on that to the extent we can. Do you want to address that?
Yeah, just briefly, I think there was just a little bit of discussion, I believe, with a consultant in this regard, and the, the concern from a water supply standpoint is that for agricultural use, you still have to take the water and treat it, and you have all the expenses that you have to, to create a water that's potable so that you can drink it, and then to use it for agriculture is sort of a...
You're saying your cost of water is the same whether you put it on a plant or...
Right, it is.
On the table.
It is, right. So that was one reason, I think, that we didn't explore that in any detail.
All right. The next person who's on my list is William Gonski, 68 Golden Drive in Florence.
And the only other thing I would just add, the finance director, of course, points this out, is that, you know, anytime you do that, you're shifting those costs to some other customer. So that's the other thing that we're trying to balance out. So I think I'll need to check with Chip after and talk to some folks about just how irrigation is happening, if some of, just to really understand what scale we're talking about.
And put the community gardens on your list too, because I know that, the community gardeners also, I think, don't they get water?
Well, that's, I believe the city provides that water, correct? Or not? We build them, I think we build them. Yeah, they have a hose that we build them for, so, yeah, we'll take a look at that.
Great, thank you. So Mr. Gonski, I'm sorry.
So I've been a resident of Florence for 27 years. I hold a plumbing license in the state of Connecticut. I did speak at the last meeting. After the last meeting, I found a little bit of new information. I found out that in 2014, our city won an award from the DEP for using what was stated as well below the average consumption of the 65-gallon-per-day capita. So the city's currently conserving, we're below what the state's asking for at the current time. And we keep on kind of hammering on this conservation, conservation, conservation. I know that water's an important commodity, but do we really need to conserve as much as we're talking about? I would question that. Conservation also leads to lack of revenues if we don't have a water issue for the city, which thus makes rate increases needed. So once again, we save on this side, we charge on this side. Earlier this year, the city council said that affordability is paramount to our city. I don't believe that our current or proposed water and sewer rates promote affordable living in the city of Northampton. It's not helping us fill those empty storefronts when you look at the total cost of doing business. You may look at that one tax rate, but that's not everything to be in business in a city. There's multiple items that add up to your costs. City council also said that we want to focus on finding young family places to live and senior, and hopefully keep seniors in our city. Our current and proposed rates, in my mind, do not promote that type of thought. In regards to the different rate sizes based on meters, that truthfully makes no sense to me. I think it's discriminatory towards larger families, and I'll use families, and potentially gives commercial accounts lower rates. Rate should be set on usage, if anything. How much you use is how much you pay for, not, you know, what size your meter is, because you could, you know, if that's the case, I'd like a 2-inch meter, so I can get a lower rate. In the past 10 years, and this was based on numbers on the city website, water in Northampton has increased 71.44% in the last 10 years. That's over 7% a year. Sewer has increased 52%, over 5% a year. I question once again if this is affordable living, when hopefully an average person might get a 2% to 3% increase in their pay on a yearly basis. We can do the math, doesn't add up that great. I would also question, as part of the budget, we had a five-year plan of putting aside $200,000 for land acquisitions. I would question the mayor and the water department if that's required by the DEP or EPA, or is it just, would it be nice that we own that property around our reservoir? It'd be nice if I owned a Cadillac, but I can't afford one, so I drive a Chevrolet. A million dollars would go a long way towards the projects. Basically, that five-year plan had $8 million worth of projects, a million dollars, and land acquisitions that I can't see that we potentially need would go a long way towards I truthfully believe that the rate should be frozen at the current rates or levels or even decreased based on the percentages of increases that we've seen in the last 10 years. I also have had another, two more questions. On the 16th CCF conservation rate, with the household average of 2.07, is that Northampton's household average, a state average, or a national average? That seems awful low to me. Also, in the comparison bill column with the cell phone and cable, luckily, cell phone and cable are optional bills. If I decide not to have a cell phone or cable TV, I can get rid of it. Unfortunately, water is not an optional fee. We all need water to survive, so we're kind of stuck with that one, so. And then one other thing I'd like to point out, if you were to look at the customer impact on the local businesses, we say that the average household is at 16. Florence hardware business came in at 8 CCF. I would assume they basically have a toilet, maybe two, and a sink, maybe a shower. I probably would guess that they don't shower there. They're almost close... almost close to what we're calling the average household usage. I don't foresee that Florence Hardware has a lot of outdoor use. And I would potentially question on a lot of the charts on when these numbers were taken. Are these winter numbers? I'm sure summer numbers are going to be much higher in the rates if you factor in the outside usage factor of it. So you could potentially make it look pretty tasty if you took your December billing where you're not using any outside water. I would be interested to see it over a year's worth of usage with the highs and the lows, and then what's the true increase? If we look at the lowest amount, we're going to have the lowest increases. So I appreciate you listening to my comments. Thank you.
And the one question in there, I think, was with regards to...
So the, those...
2.07.
Yeah, that is Northampton. That is our average. Yeah, too, that is, and it's actually pretty, tracks pretty close to the state average as well. So the, you know, we've had, that's why we've lost, you know, congressional districts in each of the last two decades, because our population is, the size of families in our population is shrinking. The, the average quarterly consumption, we actually took a full year of water usage. We took a complete year of water usage, and then we did an average of those four quarters of that full year. So we weren't cherry picking a winter number or a summer number. We were taking an average, just again, to try to give people, like it says, an average quarterly consumption. In terms of Florence Hardware, they're, they're at 8 CCF.
It's like half of 16.
So that's half of 16. So they're actually 50% of the conservation rate. The, and then the other, well, I was going to ask Mr. Lord to talk about the land acquisition, which I know the counselors are somewhat familiar with, because we often come forward with a combination of grants and other, and other funding to try to secure some of the protection areas around our watershed.
Sure. So there were just a couple of questions about land acquisition and the importance to the city's water quality. It's viewed within the DEP world and the world of water suppliers. The best, best protection for any public water supply is to protect the water quality in the watershed where you get your water from. So that's sort of a key part of any strategy for any public water supplier is to protect the watershed where you're getting your water from. The city is obligated by DEP to have a watershed resource protection plan, which outlines our strategy for protecting the water quality of the city. One important element of that watershed resource protection plan is a land acquisition plan. So if you go to our watershed resource protection plan, you'll see we've identified the properties that we own, properties that are protected, state forest or whatever use, land that it's under private ownership. And then over time, we've acquired parcels of land, as the counselors know. Since 2009, we've acquired about 251 acres of land within the watershed. It's something that is viewed very favorably by the state and something that we're proud of, actually, in terms of protecting the city's water. And we commonly will get grants. There's not a lot of grants in this world for many things, but for land protection, for water supply, there is grant money. And over the last five years, we've secured over $400,000 in state grants that have offset the purchase price of a number of the properties that we've purchased. So we feel it's a good program, and it's been very successful. And ultimately, in terms of the water quality for the city in the long run, it's the best way to provide protection for that water quality.
So the fewer septic tanks in the watershed, the better?
Yes.
And just a couple of questions, since you brought up DEP. Across, you know, the entire two bar graphs you showed about prospective debt service, most of the work we're doing has been mandated by higher authority, correct?
Yes.
The water filtration plant was mandated. The updates to the sewage treatment plant are mandated. The updates to the dike system were mandated. It's not like we elected to thought that was a good idea. It was imposed upon us, correct?
That's right. We have, the city operates in a highly regulated environment for both water and sewer. Environmental Protection Agency on the federal level and DEP on the state level highly regard all of our activities in terms of protecting the environment and public health and safety. So those are the reasons why we do things.
Okay. So the next name I know I'll get right, because it's Mike Kirby, 134 North Street in Northampton.
Thank you very much. I, this is, I'm sitting here scratching my head like usual, because this is a very difficult, complex matter. The one, one element that I'd like to know more about is the quarterly fire protection charge, which seems to be regulated by the size of the pipe that feeds the street, I guess. And like, the six-inch one comes out to 170 on the quarterly charge and a total of $684 a year. And I'd like to know more about why the fire protection charge, what is like the average pipe size downtown and out in the outskirts, like in the Leeds and that area? In other words, what is this, what is this bias? Just have one more question.
Sure. So you understand that that's not a fire, that's not a charge that you'll pay. That's not a charge that you will pay, that we're charging all customers. It's a charge that we only are going to charge a facility that has a separate un-metered fire line in addition to their main water line going to a business. They have a separate un-metered, we actually just put one in at the Florence Fire Station, because we installed a sprinkler system there with a FEMA grant, so we had to run a separate fire line to that building. So it's really a charge on only those customers, which is a much smaller universe of customers, that have a fire suppression system. You know, this is common, Springfield, Boston, Worcester, you can, lots of other communities do it. It's been upheld, you know, by its, by the SJC. It's, it's, and again, it's generally tied to the size of the infrastructure. That's why the fee taps into that. Yeah. So I'm not, we're not charging you and Lou an extra charge for fire protection. We're not doing that. Unless you decide to put a sprinkler system in, then there'd be that charge. But even then, if you had a residential home, you may not have a two-inch line. You may have a smaller line. So we're not, part of the reason why we're going two-inch and above is there, there's very few residential systems. I think there's like a handful. And we're actually trying to incentivize some of those people to, to put some sprinkler systems in. So anyway, that's, so it really wouldn't affect anyone who's a residential customer. We're not talking about the fire hydrants or the fire flow there. We're talking about if a separate line has to be tapped off of our line to go to a business.
Mike, you had another question? Do you have another question? Why don't you go right ahead while you have the floor?
Well, I'll hold off. Okay. Can I?
Yeah, you can. We'll do, do a last call. And Fred Zemich?
Fred Zemach.
Zemach. I've been trying to say Zemich all night, and I know it's wrong.
It's two syllables.
Even Pam tried to correct me. I apologize. And you're on Tom Roy.
I'm on Tom Roy Terrace, 23. I'd like to thank the mayor for trying to answer my questions. I think he tried to answer the question about the affordable city, but I think it needs a little more work. Two things that concern me probably mainly is the projection of the rates beyond fiscal '17 to '18, '19, and '20. Can we do that? Are they going to be the same?
We can try to do some of that using our modeling. Yeah. Obviously, the vote, you know, it's, they have to be voted on annually. We're not voting on them on a five-year basis, so we'll be, we'll be renewing them every year. But we can certainly show you or try to figure out what the underlying assumption would be.
The other question that I had was, could you compare the revenues for fiscal '16 to '17 to get an idea of how much more money you're getting, or how much money you're collecting?
Certainly.
She's not here.
We can give you that. Well, yeah, part of it's sort of, the revenues are tied to the rates, so we haven't, we are sort of in stasis in terms of the enterprise fund budgets, but we are, the rates are projected to raise an additional 2% revenue on the water enterprise fund, and the sewer enterprise fund is projected to go up 3%.
Okay, so if I would look at each year, it would go 2%, 2% increase, 2% each year?
Overall enterprise fund, yes. The goal is to generate that much.
But that doesn't necessarily reflect the people's individual bills.
That's right. It's differently, but I'm just trying to find out how big the pots getting. Are you getting twice as much money, four times as much money? And the other item that I had was about conservation, and it was brought up last time, and I guess I didn't understand it. But if you look at the rates for the five-eighths inch pipes, the cost of the water goes down until you reach the next size of pipe. So how does that get somebody to conserve if he knows that if he uses more water, it's going to be cheaper?
It has to do with the fixed charge being added.
It actually, I'm not sure what you mean, because when you use more water above 16 CCF, it goes up.
Does the fixed charge affect that?
The cost of water goes down until you get to the next size of pipe.
You use, are you incorporating the fixed charge into that as well?
No.
Okay.
But I mean, what's, how are you conserving? What in this plan makes me conserve?
Well, the idea was, we heard a lot of feedback from residents at the public hearings we held last year that said that they are, they are trying to collect rainwater, they're trying to save bath water, they're trying to take less showers, they're trying to keep their consumption down. And I, mathematically, I, you know, if you lower your consumption, you're going to pay less, correct?
True.
So that's...
But I mean, what specifically in the plan will make me conserve water?
Well, the thought, well, we actually, what we didn't talk about, and we did, we mentioned this the last time, we are also doing, the department is also going to be doing some other conservation measures for people. We've got these great water conservation kits that we're going to make available to people, which have, you know, the aerator, you know, inserts and have the, there's actually a thing that you can mimic a low-flow toilet. It's a free kit that we can give to people. And then the things we do, like with rain barrels, I mean, that's a water conservation measure.
Okay, but I'm looking for things in the plan.
Well, well, I mean, the clearest way to build in conservation among residential homeowners is to have the two-tiered rate. That does provide you, your first 16 CCFs of water, you're paying less. When you get above that, you're, you'll start to pay more. So I mean, I guess that's, and we tried to show you that, we established the conservation rate using that sort of standard for what is average daily consumption for you and me. It's supposed to be, we're, we're supposed to use ideally 65 gallons of water a day per person. Anything over that, they would consider to be non-essential uses. So the idea is to try to track people as much to 65 gallons per day, and in an average household in Northampton, that's 16 CCF. So that's where we came up with it. So.
I have one final question.
Yeah, step up to the mic so we can hear you.
I saved the dumb question for the, for the end. And basically, what happened is I looked at the water and sewer rates that were posted on the assessors' wall, and I found that they increased around 6% or 7% a year. So I tried to answer the question of why they do increase 6% or 7% a year. My inclination would have been to say that it's due to inflation, it's due to salaries. But what I see here is that the increases are not due to inflation or salaries, but they're due to repairs and maintenance. So, okay, you've got this plan, you've got your repair and maintenance that you're going to do, it's going to run out until, what, '20, '21?
That's what we're showing, kind of a five-year model.
Okay, so you get...
We also projected beyond that as well.
Okay, so you got this five-year model, you're going to do all these repairs, you're going to buy this property, blah, 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 whatever else, you're going to fix the pipes. And at the end of those five years, supposedly, you've taken all those increases that we've given you, you've spent them, the job's done, it's free. What happens to the rates? They go down? They stay constant?
Let me address that. I know, and I know that you talked about, I think, you got the link I sent you, didn't, did you get the link?
I didn't see your email. I haven't been on a computer since three o'clock.
Okay. Well, I actually sent it many days ago, but on that, on that, on the website, there actually was the, there's a table, that static table, then below it, there's actually percentages. But I'll send you, I may not have your right email address. But you are correct that there was a period during, there were significant increases every year. And you can track them, they're on our website, there's a water and sewer rate historical table. And it started, I think, in 2002, there was like a 22% increase. And what you're seeing there is the cost of building the water filtration plant that we were mandated by consent to build at a cost of, they're $29 million. So we're still carrying the debt service on that project. And so we didn't raise the rates to pay cash, we paid the rates to, you know, we raised the rates to cover mostly the debt service. We do pay cash for some small projects. And, and, but we're still, if you go back to that, well, the financial model, some of the existing debt that you see, which is a big chunk of our expenses, is we're still paying down that debt. So, but you're right, as old debt comes off, then you're able to then either swap it out, or you're right, lower the rates once we get those projects completed. But if we're going to borrow 29 million, you know, we're going to actually, we are going to try to borrow as much of it as we can, as early as we can, because the rates are so favorable right now. So we're going to try to bundle as many of those things together. That's why on the, on the, you know, whatever the earlier plan, we show like in '19, like, you know, over 20 million, but, you know, you actually won't construct and actually go to bond probably until '21, but whatever. That just shows you how, because usually you short-term borrow during the construction phase. But, but then, we're not just going to, we're not just going to write a check for 29 million on that day. We're going to bond, and then we're going to, so part of that plan is we're going to try to have enough of the debt service to pay it over. But it's going to take us probably, I don't know, how long are we bonding, Susan?
Different projects are different times. Engineering is less than...
Yeah. But we may actually even look at a longer-term bond. There's been some relief, there's been some changes. So typically, like, the police station is a 20-year bond. So that's sort of a model.
So sometime in the future, the rates will go down.
Most, that is definitely...
But it's never done that in the past.
That would be the hope, yes. But of course, you know, labor costs, electricity costs, costs of all the other things have also continued. There's also just normal inflation.
Yeah, but I mean, previously, it was like 6% going to 7%. That's much more than inflation.
Well, it was, it was part of their debt schedule plan in order to raise enough revenue to carry the debt service on that, on that particular plant, which we're still carrying.
Well, and the other problem is, you know, if you, even if you look at a 20-year bond for these projects, that's provided that our friends at DEP or EPA don't come up with any other expensive bright ideas that they oppose on, pose on in the meantime.
Yeah.
Which is why it tends to, you know, it gets to a plateau and it stays there, because as one thing gets paid off, another one comes down the pike that you then have to deal with, unfortunately.
No, I think ideally, we would, yeah, when we start to pay down projects, you know, just like we're doing with our debt exclusion projects, you know, we just paid off the JFK override last year. That was a 20-year debt exclusion. That's now gone off the books. Of course, now the police station is going to really, is going to step up because we...
We've only done like three or four years on this.
Yeah. And we did a hybridized model to let the JFK get out of the way before we started paying for that. So you're constantly, Susan is, has a debt schedule that she's always looking at to try to see how, when debt comes off, can we then work in more projects? So the goal isn't to try to, obviously, we're trying to keep the rates at a reasonable rate. And I would say that when you look at that history of six, 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 seven, and then you look at the last two years, we basically had a two, a zero, because we did a zero in water and sewer last year, and then now we're proposing...
I appreciate it, man.
Yes. And now we're proposing this revenue increase. We're trying to keep them at a moderate level, not at the 6% or 7% level. And part of that's by diversifying the revenue stream as well.
Are there any other members of the public that want to speak before we let Mr. Kirby do his other question? Spence, you want to? You're not on the list, but come on up. You're not on the list, but come on up.
Sorry, it's 19 mark circle. I was a couple of questions, should I just ask them in a row and then, okay. I, I've tried to look this up and I wasn't able to figure it out. I just want a definition so that I know what I'm talking about, about what, what does improve equity among customer types mean? Because I really, I don't, I, I'm clueless as to what that means and listening here, I've, now I understand that we actually can't tell the difference between business and residential, so does customer types only mean the meter size? And there was some issue with getting that data, so I thought, I want to know what that is, but what's improve equity among customer types? Another question is, what's the penalty for not meeting the discharge permit? And are all the other communities surrounding us meeting their discharging permits? And then for fire protection, why not have a volumetric charge on fire protection too? That way, if a building catches on fire and the sprinklers go on, you charge them for having put in the lines and then you charge them for every gallon of water that comes out to put the fire out. That, that'd make a lot of revenue for the city. And with fire protection, that's something that people have to have, right? And it's something that's been there, it's infrastructure, it's for safety. So would it be okay to have a sidewalk charge? We're going to have, institute a sidewalk charge or a bike lane charge? Oh, your, your house is next to the bike path, so there's, there's a charge for that, you know, because you have the privilege of being next to the bike path. The tax exemption qualification that people can apply for, does that make this a tax? And why are you applying for it at the assessor's office if it, if it's not a tax? It seems like it would qualify as that. And on the fixed charges, it seems the council is going to have no oversight on the fixed charges whatsoever. So not that I think that this would happen, but this is hyperbole to make the point. If, if the fire protection charge went to a million dollars, right, the council would have no way, constituents were calling incessantly saying, this is a problem, this is a problem, I can't afford to pay a million dollars a year for, for fire protection, I can't do it. They'd have, there, there's no recourse for them unless in four years, they vote the mayor out and then they have to vote a new mayor and to then change the fire protection charge. In the plan, it says larger than one meter, so that, I want to know, does that not include one meter? And the mayor was nice enough to, to publish his water and sewer bill, which I thought was very generous. And he's using, let's see here, 21, I believe it is, which if you go by average, right, he's, he's over, and if you go by the average, he said for North Hampton, which was 16 CCF, he's five CCF over typical usage. And I, I mean, I don't think that the mayor would be purposefully wasteful with, with, with the water. Last thing is, we cited, you know, the, the fact that families, we don't have enough families, people are moving out, et cetera, but yet for apartment buildings, right, they're going to be paying the higher rate for water and the higher meter fee, and that's going to get passed on to the renters. So the renters are going to feel that and will get even less families. Math question, because I'm terrible at it. I was looking at the water rate and the sewer rate and it says we're going to get charged 80% of our water usage. But there's a 23.68% increase in the cost. So it's, I mean, it's not really, I mean, it's not really a decrease, it's, you're going to be charged less percentage-wise, but you're charged more as a total. And again, same question that, yes, I don't think people have really been able to address this, anyone, yeah, and I, I hope that someone can just slay this thing. The city is going to sponsor conservation efforts for families, giving them aerators, giving them all different ways to conserve, which sounds great. But then you look at the projections and you look at the plan and we have a line that, on this graph, that is just going one direction, up. So I mean, if people conserve and the city helps them to conserve, where does the money come from? I don't, I don't understand how there are going to be more revenues with more conservation. I just, it doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, I'm going to try to remember all those, I'll start, start from the last.
If you want, I'll try to one.
Oh, yeah, great, awesome, okay.
If you want, as a former assessor, when you're done with the rest, I'll talk about the.
Yeah, so the conserve, and I'm going to have Jim talk about one of those questions. Yeah, I mean, the conservation thing, I mean, we really looked at, you know, this is, you know, North Hampton has a major focus on being a sustainable community, using our resources wisely. These are, you know, these are, you know, precious resources in many parts of the world and actually many parts of the country. So we feel it's important to have some conservation aspect built into the plan. Now, and that's sort of wearing our sustainable North Hampton hat. If we're just going to approach this as we're, you know, water salesmen, then we're probably going to walk around in trucks and tell you to take 20-minute showers. But that's not really what we're going to do. We're trying to build a system that is clean and affordable and, and also try to encourage people, because what we heard from people is we want to, want to reduce our expenses and one of the ways to do that is to, is to help them conserve. That's why water, you know, companies are incentivizing low flush toilets and efficient washing machines, et cetera. You know, that's, so that's, that's the basis for that. And if, it may result in some decreased consumption, that's true. But again, one of the goals of moving away from a 99.6% consumption-based rate system is to, is to allow for some variations without major, you know, is to try to get away from just revenue-based costs. Well, let's see. In terms of equity among customer types, when we went into this, we wanted to look at what are the different customer types that we have. And mainly what that breaks out to are a sort of a large class of mostly smaller customers and that, and then, and then another class of larger customers. When we went into this, that was one of the goals of the study, was to really look at, right now, we basically had a flat system, a flat tax. If you had the largest, if you were the largest pipe and the largest water user in the city, you were paying the same amount for your water as the smallest pipe and the smallest user. So that's what we meant in terms of equity among user types. We didn't say equity among residential and commercial or any of that. This is clearly not a tax, it's a fee, it's based on consumption, it's based on, you know, your, your use of the infrastructure. And that's well-supported. In terms of the assessor piece, I mean, what we were trying to do was use an existing state-approved discount program that is already in place and that it already has a certification process. And that's why we chose the assessor's office to do the certification. We actually do it for the, you know, the tax.
CPA does it.
What's that?
CPA uses that same certification.
Exactly, yeah. And that's a surcharge. And then the other, we also used it for the tax work-off program. Because they're already in the business of meeting with people confidentiality and reviewing, confidentially and reviewing their income statements, it made more sense rather than creating another whole system that somebody would have to administer to just use the existing system. But I don't think that converts it to a tax by doing it that way.
No, and it's.
And actually, we did that with stormwater. We actually used the same exemption system for stormwater, which is another utility fee, and, and the council ordinance applied that same standard. So this actually standardizes them all.
And it's, it's the same discount. It, it's either, if you qualify, you get the same discount as, as anybody else does. So anyone who qualifies for the exemption that's statutory with the state for the assessors, what they figure out there, if you qualify, you get the same reduction that anyone else that qualifies does, isn't graduated in any way.
Okay.
Yeah.
In terms of my own personal water usage, I will plead guilty to using 2100 CF, a 21 CF, which is above the rate. My only defense is I have a two teenager, two teenagers at home and we do struggle with trying to get them to minimize their, their shower time and water consumption time. So that's, that, that's what my usage is and I'm going to pay more for the water that I go, that I exceed the 16 CCF on. And, you know, when our household maybe shrinks in size and kids go off to college, then we may find ourselves getting closer to that goal. But, you know, we try to use rain barrels, we try to do some of those things, but that's, those are the facts in my household.
You have really clean teenagers.
Yeah, yes. What were the other, did you want to talk about the other one that had to do with? So that's usage at my home. Oh, in terms of the, in terms of the fixed charges, let me just say, you know, just like the council, if the council, you know, the council's an elected body, the mayor's an elected body. The mayor has an administrative role under the charter and I have to stand election. And if I were going to implement million-dollar fire fees, I would hear about it, I'd probably hear about it from the council first, and then I would begin to hear about it from the public. So I would be held to the same, you know, corrective action that the council would be held to. And then in terms of the fire piece, while it's, you know, it, it, it's true that in some cases, nightclubs and some larger establishments, there is that mandatory nature. I will say though, that a water-based system is not mandatory. There are non-water-based systems. So if somebody wanted to say, I'm going to do this off the water grid and I'm going to do it with a, a chemical-based suppression system, they could. And there are also some of our facilities that have their own water storage that they use on-site. Believe the V, did the VA still have a water? I think the VA may have taken theirs down, but I know what, we've had some independent water sources as well throughout the city. So again, I would just say that the fire, the way, the way that it's been approved for a fixed charge is this methodology that we're using.
And just to follow up on that, we still have a cost to supply that system to them and our hope is that they never need to use it. But even if they never use it, we still incur a cost to provide it. And, you know, the hope is they never have to use their fire suppression system, but it still costs us something to make it available to them even if they don't use it.
Exactly, it's an on-demand, large-capacity source of water.
And I'm assuming when they want it, they want it.
And at this point, all of the other rate payers are subsidizing that service. So again, this is all about where the cost gets shifted. So right now, Mike, you, you are paying for that. You don't have it at your house, but you are actually paying for it in your rate. This system would try to capture some of the fixed costs of us providing that much capacity down the line to all these businesses that need additional capacity, so that if there is a fire, God forbid, then the system will work properly.
Wes, did that cover all your questions?
Yeah, oh, yes. The fire, the fire protection versus if you were implementing, say, a sidewalk charge, right, or a, a fire exit door surcharge, or, in other words, it, it rests only in the executive branch, the power to, to administer that, that fee.
Yep.
It's non-negotiable, not, doesn't go before the public, it, it just is and it can be set. And I don't think voting the mayor out would be a way, you know what I mean? It doesn't seem like a, a good system.
But that authority is actually established under mass general law. I mean, that's the, that, that authority, that's the structure that we have and the charter is, is a mass general law as well, so the fee can't be, you know, the fee can't be. And that's the other piece of this, is that the fee, whether the council sets it or I set it or anybody sets it, there is a lot of case law that it has to be reasonable and it has to bear a relationship to the service that's being offered. And you could actually be sued. You, you know, you can take people to court and they do often.
So you would have to build out that cost and show that, so that you wouldn't be sued?
You have to be able to show that it bears a reasonable proportion to your fixed cost of your money and service. And in fact, you know, that, I mentioned, there were some case law about some charges that were, there were some towns that were actually trying to implement a, an actual fire protection charge where they were actually going to, because it was sort of like the, you know, sort of like the Amherst situation, it wasn't Amherst, but I'm saying it was a town that had some, a specified universe of, of users that needed like more fire apparatus to be able to protect them. And the town attempted to charge a special fee for that and that was determined to be an illegal tax and end around because it really didn't bear a reasonable, you know, it wasn't actually a fee for something, so.
Yeah, so the burden, the burden of proof is if, in fact, your charges exceed the reasonable cost to provide the service, then the court says, then it is a tax.
Exactly.
Because it isn't related to the cost to provide the service.
And you're just purely generating revenue and above and beyond, so.
The last one was the, the cost of living because of the, the higher rate for all the apartment buildings?
Well, again, I think that's another one that gets answered, I think, when you look at the, that, that exercise I did earlier where you take the rates and you run them out. And so if you have an apartment building that's, that's paying the larger rate and is, and is, and is consuming the equivalent of four single-family homes, you're actually going to pay less for your water consumption at the end of that exercise. So they actually, there is, there is a savings built in. And then there's of course, conservation measures that the landlord can do. The landlord could certainly put separate meters in if they wanted to.
And there's one fixed charge for all that consumption, which is what results in that.
Exactly, yes, there's one fixed charge based on all of that consumption. But if you run the numbers and you take an apartment building and you take my home and you run the comparison out, you'll find that over time, because you're paying that higher rate, it outstrips the 16 CCF and you actually pay less.
We've done that, we have that data.
I just did it at the beginning of the meeting. I compared my, I compared my bill with the brewery and I said that if.
You were talking about an apartment building.
Yeah, but it's the same thing, I mean, if, if.
An apartment building and the brewery.
Consumption.
No, I'm saying that, you're saying that there's a disparity between a residential home and apartment building. And I'm saying that if I use the amount of water that an apartment building uses, I would actually pay more than that apartment building would pay because of the way the rate works for larger users. Any apartment building is going to have a larger than a one-inch meter. In fact, most of the dorms, you know, most of the, most of the Smith dorms or houses all have one and a half, two-inch meters. The properties, River Run Condominiums has a two-inch meter, the Housing Authority properties, those are all in that same category as well. So if you run those numbers out mathematically, a high consumption of water, they're going to pay a lower rate for consumption than I'm going to pay.
I agree with you and you're right about that, but what I'm, what I'm citing is that if, if you have multiple families living in an apartment building, right?
Yep.
This rate, this tier-one rate.
Yep.
Is never going to apply unless it's separately metered. So if you have an apartment building.
Yep.
That has multiple apartments, right, and they use what a normal family does.
Yep.
Say 22 CCF, right? Then every single, every single CCF inside that apartment building is paying $6.09 per CCF.
Okay. I, I wish I had the.
That's still cheaper than me and my single family. It's like 21.
Yeah. And I know you have a larger than the average-sized family, so, which I realize that's, you know, I have nine kids and there's not many families of nine anymore around, so I know that's.
And I would question how many city departments had a 70 to 50% increase in the last 10 years would survive in this city, would we even have a city?
Not a water question, so let's move on. Mike, did you have another question?
But I.
Go ahead.
I'll try to do a scenario like that where, like, I mean, if I had, if I could have access to the calculator, like take the 2100, take my 2100, multiply it by four, run, and then run that consumption, 21, 48, 96. So run 96 CCF through the calculator on a five-eighths inch line and then run it through the calculator on a one and a half inch line. And the apartment building, multiple families, they're going to end up paying less for the water. So it's not going to, so, but I'm not saying, again, you can't capture within an apartment building individually, it's only the use. And so the only incentive would be to find an apartment that has individually metered or if the landlord wants to try to build that in. I don't know how landlords do this, how they address that, I don't know how they divide the.
Well, usually, usually what they do is there's one service meter to the building and then you sub-meter the units.
Yeah.
So that reduce rate would probably never apply since you're being metered by the city with one big meter and then you're sub-metering your tenants. So they'd never see that below 16 rate.
Yeah.
Because you're just getting a bill for, for the.
Yeah, I know Dr. Levinson was here last time. He has a situation where he's in an un-metered plaza and he's there with a laundromat and he's there with a restaurant, another restaurant and he's there, and I know that's an issue. And I know that's an issue internally for that landlord and that customer. Because how do you apportion the water correctly among those diverse users? And there's a convenience store which probably doesn't use much water at all, so.
Okay, so let's hit our second questions. Mike, you had one? Can you step up though, so, did you have a question? Which one of you gentlemen has a second question? Yeah, just step up to the podium so we can hear you.
You feel more distinguished and more, a better human being when you stand in front.
You look more distinguished every time I see you.
It may be illusory. I think the mayor said there were three large users.
Five.
Five. Five large users that are more or less off the grid. And I wanted to know who they are and is there, the rate they pay should be public, right?
The five users are Coca-Cola, Packaging Corporation, L3 KEO, the, the Cooley Dickinson Hospital, and the Florence Casket Company. And so what's happening is, like in the case of Coca-Cola, they have, they're putting, they're using a lot of water and they, but most of it is not going into the sewer system. Actually, the vast majority of it isn't going into the sewer system. So, and they're using high capacities of it on a daily 24-hour rate. So they have a, they were granted a special sewer meter that actually measures what does leave their facility and go into the storm, into the water system, the sewer system. And so, and that's the same with Packaging Corp. And so there are some users because of a very special, because of their manufacturing process, or, or however that's, works, have those meters. It's not something you could do, you could not do sewer meters in everybody's home. It would be very difficult to have a reliable meter that wasn't getting clogged with my daughter's, my daughter's hair after every shower. Or whatever else it would get clogged with. So that's why you, it's really not feasible to have a separate sewer meter in every home. But there are some large manufacturers that have a very water-intensive purpose and they're really using a vast, it's not that 80% thing. It's more like, I don't even know what the percentage of water they're using that's not going in, I don't know what that is. But it's, you know.
It would be nice that they cut down on the truck traffic on North, North Avenue too. Evidently.
You got to stay water-related, Mike.
True, true and unrelated.
We're not, we're not doing trucks.
True, true and unrelated, you said it, okay. Do you know the names of the areas, communities that are using these consultants offhand?
We, I can give you names, I, I know, I think, I can certainly, if you go to their website, they, they've got, they've got plenty of. The one that I, the one that I found them on initially was Arlington, Massachusetts, I think it's Arlington.
Experienced matrix, towns.
Yeah, in their proposal, they listed a number of towns, you know, town of Belmont, they listed Peterborough, Winthrop, Canton, Portsmouth. There's a whole, they're on, and they're, if you go to their website, we have a link to their website on our page. But I had first discovered them because Arlington, Mass, which is a community that has a very, a well-regarded town manager and they have some really unique fiscal policies, including the five-year, I, we, we borrowed that five-year plan from them. They had done it very successfully. So they had just switched to a, a tiered rate system. But Springfield has a tiered rate system. And I've mentioned before, the MWRA, which serves 61 communities, by statute, they have a tiered system. So that's 61 communities in and around Boston. I think Chickaby is served by them too.
I happened to discover, just by accident doing a, a article about two of the dam fair, two of the dams in the valley. I went up to Williamsburg to see the dam that had failed, the, the big flood in the valley. And I discovered that the city of Northampton owns all the land that the old dam was on. Plus, it owns the watershed, a couple hundred acres, I think, that we originally bought in something like 1870 or 1880 or something like that. That we were going to use that valley for our water system. But we have never used that land, to my knowledge. And I'm just wondering, because part of that land is, is, is worth quite a bit of money because it's developable. It's right on one of the major roads. And so I'm wondering, when we look at our water rates, also look at the land that we own and see if we can turn that into some cash to help some of these really high costs, okay?
Okay.
You're, you're all set, Mike?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Once Jim answers his question, and Fred has one more question.
I'm going to answer one question and I'm going to, I'm going to make a statement about something else that, if I could do that. The question about the land is actually a very good one. We, the city water department owns a lot of land, the vast majority of it is within our active watersheds and the reservoirs that we use. There is some land, as Mike Kirby had just mentioned here, that isn't in our currently active watersheds. And it's something that we're aware of, about whether it's, in the long run, in the city's best interest to continue to hold on to that property. Is there a need to hold on to it, to expand the water supply in the future? Or if there isn't a need, then there, there might be a decision there to divest of the, of some of those land holdings. But some of them were purchased, as, as Mike indicated, a long, long time ago and probably not for very much money. The other thing I wanted just to say about the, the rate organization proposal overall is that we've drilled down to, into a tremendous amount of detail about these tiers and the 65 gallons per capita per day. But there's sort of another global policy element to this. And that is, the 65 gallons per person per day is really the sanctioned water use that the DEP has indicated to us, no permits. So having a structure to our rate system that's tied to a conservation rate for the amount of sanctioned water that the, the state is saying it's generally okay to take, it makes a lot of sense to have a rate structure the way that it's proposed. And the other thing that, that we didn't mention is that the way that the state enforces some of these things like the 65 gallons per capita per day is they, they tie it to actions for grants and loans that we get to improve our water and wastewater system. So if we want to take out a $30 million loan for the wastewater treatment plant improvements, if we go to the state and ask for a low-interest loan grant or debt forgiveness on some of this, some of the money that we would look to, one of the things that they would ask us would be, well, how is the community conserving water? What steps has the community taken to, to conserve water and to get the usage below 65? And one, one element of it is to say that we've made a significant improvement in the way that we build for water and sewer that's tied to the sanctioned water use that we're allowed under our permit. So that's one element that I happen to like a lot because it can save in the long run in terms of our ability to finance some of the bigger projects.
One more question that I just remembered Wes, could you, could you step here? And I just, I just remembered it, which was, he asked, what are the penalties for non-compliance? That we're making these upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant and what are the penalties? I'm assuming you were asking for a house benefit reason?
Yeah.
So what are the fines, what are the fees? Are, are other communities being fined or being monitored? Maybe you just wanted to describe what the, what the regulatory system is like for wastewater.
Sure, I'm not sure at the moment. I believe that most of the area wastewater treatment plants are meeting their permit in the Connecticut River in, in our area. But under the Clean Water Act, the penalties can be significant for non-compliance with your permit. I believe they can be up to $10,000 a day. Potential higher fines or imprisonment for people that are involved in not assisting a community in the way that they should in order to meet permits. So some of the, I looked this up a few years ago and it's quite draconian it can be if you don't meet your permit. So it's really a road that you really don't want.
So it's not like Obamacare, you can't game the system and just pay the penalties?
It's also, it's also the same on the water side as well.
It is.
Do most surrounding communities beat the 65 per gallon capita? That was the question.
I, I do not know. I, I couldn't tell you that, it's a state goal and we're looking at Northampton, so, so anyway, yeah, I don't, I don't know that.
Fred, did you have one more question?
I have one more question, and that is, if I find out that I'll have a cheaper rate by going to a one-inch pipe, can I go to a one-inch pipe or a bigger pipe?
A cheaper rate with a one-inch pipe?
If I save money going to a bigger pipe?
Because we talked about the fact that some of the larger consumers end up paying a little less because.
If you were going out that far, well, you'd be paying, a one-inch, you'd be paying the same fixed charge as your 5/8.
I know, so what, a two-inch pipe or whatever?
You'd have to go to a two-inch pipe.
So can I, can I get a two-inch pipe because I find it cheaper?
I, I don't know how that works. My sense is your water consumption, Fred, I don't know, I, my sense.
I have two other apartments, they're, they're drawing water, so.
I, that's a good, I do, I do not know. I know we've discussed internally if there's a business that has a historic, like oversized system and that business has now changed and it's no longer.
Using the water.
That we may allow them to retrofit, but I'm not sure what are, if we would be letting you upsize your, your line. Jim, talk about how that would work.
I guess, well, that's, that's a good question, obviously, we haven't done any of these yet. Fred can probably, you can probably work out the math, you'll have to replace, you'll have to replace.
I'll do the math, but it just came to mind that it seemed to be an opportunity to ask you guys.
You'll have to, you'll have, you'd have to replace your water service line at your own expense. And then once the water line came into your house, we have to size the meter based on your usage. Because the meter, as you would understand, needs to reflect the amount of water that goes through it. So you'd have to look at those things and decide whether the break even makes sense for you.
But it is possible.
Sounds like it might be.
Yep, but you want to be sure, if your consumption stays the same, you know, you've got to do the math and see.
You know, there may be other businesses or places that might consider the same.
It may pay, you might really see the benefit about 30 years from now. That happens with these things. Any other questions from the public? Because I know the councilors have some more questions and I want, we put them off so that, so that you'd all get a chance and wouldn't have to stay here all night. Wes, you have another one?
Yeah, I just, I did the numbers, so I didn't know if you guys wanted to see it, to compare it.
I thought you weren't good at math.
I'm not, that's why I need someone to check it. So I don't know.
Go right ahead, I mean, if you want to.
Well, if you have six homes that use 16 CCF each, right? 16 times 4.73, which brings you 75.68. 75.68 times 6 brings you $454.08. So that'd be if it's on a home basis. If you have an apartment, right, that's serviced with a larger meter like you're talking about, and it has six units, so it's the same number. And they use 16 CCF each, right? That's 16 times $6.09, which brings you 110, 110.4. So 110.4 times 6 brings you to $662.04. So the, I mean, the people living in apartments will be paying more for their water, that's just, that's just how the math works.
Yeah, I ran it through the computer, I did the scenario that I stated, which was like the four-unit versus the single-family home. And it was about $11 difference, end of the charge per quarter.
But then again, if you had four single-family homes, you'd be throwing in three extra fixed charges.
This is correct.
So that's what drives it up.
That, that does, yes. Although the larger line is paying a slightly more incremental line, you're right, yeah, so, yep.
Okay, Councilor LeBarge, you had another question or did it get answered? All right, Councilor Adams, I know you had questions.
I'm wondering if there's any plan to provide further indirect general fund support from the water and sewer enterprise funds as a result of the change proposal?
Our indirects have been going down steadily over the last several years. You've seen that on our presentations, we've revised our indirect schedule. You know, this year, we will see an increase in our health insurance, just because our health insurance rates are going to go up. So that particular line item would see an increase in terms of the indirect. But that's just a direct, that's a factor of health insurance going up for those employees in the water system. So it's a portion based on that. But in terms of, this is only cover, you know, the indirects only cover the indirect costs. And so this would not generate new indirect costs because of the revenues going up. Most of these revenues are dedicated towards water capital projects. So those would be paid for through the water, through the capital plan.
I just want to say, we've dramatically overhauled the whole indirect. We used to do, we used to have like the superintendent and the engineer and do them on indirects. We're now apportioning a portion of their salary right directly to water, sewer, stormwater. So we made that major shift before. So the enterprise funds are truly reflecting the personnel that are working in them. And then, as the mayor said, we've totally revamped how we've done indirects. We've tightened them up, we've made them much more.
There's detail in the budget about it.
Justifiable. And so we've really, we've really made a concerted effort to make those indirects reflective and not be seen as some way for the general fund just to make money. Because that's not, never been the intent and I think the new methodology gets us in that direction.
I do have a follow-up question. It's about the fire protection fees. The fire protection fees are not based on usage at all. It makes, this makes me believe that it's not a, a fee at all, but a tax which would require council approval. Also, the taxpayers are already paying real estate taxes to fund the fire services, so it's like double dipping. And to me, it's, it's a fixed assessment based on tangible property. It's, it doesn't seem to be a, a user fee to me at all. And it seems to be a tax, a tax wrapped inside of a fee. That's, that's, that's a statement rather than a question, you could certainly respond.
Yeah, I guess the response would be that, that a, that a sprinkler system is in lieu of, in addition to the fire department. So you're not, you're not paying for the fire. If you don't have a, if you don't have a sprinkler system, you're relying on the, on the system, which is our fire department to come put out the fire. So it's not any way involved with the fire department. These are private systems that are put in by private companies and maintained at the expense of the private owners. It's not a municipal service. So that's number one. And then number two, I mean, we, we charge fixed fees for all kinds of things, including the fixed fees that we've been charging and will continue to charge, the metered fees, which are, again, I just, I just fundamentally disagree that they could be argued as a tax because they're hap, they're, it's just.
It's a service provided.
It's a service provided. And it's also, someone mentioned earlier, it, it is actually a voluntary service, which is one of the tests of whether something is an actual service or not. We have many customers who are on wells, we have many customers who have their own private water supplies. So it actually is not, you know, obviously, water is mandatory in our lives, but being a municipal water customer or a municipal water sewer, sewer customer is not mandatory. You would have to meet other requirements of, your water would have to be tested and your, your leach field has to pass Title.
Five.
Five, ask the realtor. So go ahead.
Councilor LeBarge?
Thank you. Mayor, as an example, on West Stanton Road, we have Habitat. Okay, that development could not go up unless that they installed the sprinkler system because of the flow of water. So the city worked very closely with Habitat and the fire department, because I know I was part of that, to make those apartments happen for that family. So it had to be done, otherwise it would not be there. So my question is, how do we work that out with the apartments or condos of Habitat?
Like, I don't know what the fire line size would be for that.
It's probably less than two.
It's probably a one-inch line if it's for serving a residential, so there's not going to be a fee, a fire fee for them. I'll have to check, I don't know that we would have put a two-inch fire, separate two-inch fire line for that. We could check, so it would only be triggered if you had a two-inch or larger fire line. We'll just have to check and see what that is. But again, it would be, if it was a 10-inch water line, it would basically be $40 a year that would have to be absorbed by the condo association. It would be a $40 charge per year.
Because there's six condos there.
Okay, so it would be, you know, $40 divided six ways for a year.
Councilor Adams, you have another question?
I just had a point, which is, I heard the response to Mr. Hardy's point about how we really can't conserve more and get more revenue simultaneously. I, I heard the response, but I, I didn't really hear an answer. I just, I, I don't, I, I still don't agree that those two things can happen easily simultaneously, they just don't seem to happen simultaneously.
Do you want to, do you have a, do you have a response to that conundrum?
Well, if you, if you use less water, you use less chemicals. There are savings.
Yeah, I mean, it does, theoretically, you would have to, you know, if we didn't use as much water, we wouldn't have as much treatment costs and other costs as well. But, but.
I think, I think, I think their concept and the, the thing they're concerned about is that we're going to develop a water system that needs a certain income level to survive and make it work. And that if we. And that if we encourage people to reduce consumption.
Yep.
Eventually, we're going to have to raise the price of the product, because they're using less of it. But the fixed cost of running the whole system still needs to be fed a certain amount of money.
I get that concern.
That's what they're concerned with, is we make people conserve, and then to capture the same amount of revenue, we have to jack the rates up.
The question.
Thank you for conserving, for raising the rate, because we have to feed the beast.
I totally get that. I totally get that. And I, I guess the question would be, I guess I'd be wondering how much the, how powerful, I mean, we're trying to do some measures, but how powerful will those actually be?
How much, how much reduction can happen?
How much reduction will actually happen? How much, we're trying, but, and we're trying again to mate our, our conservation rates, but if people are paying less than a dollar a day for water in some cases, to service their entire house, and, and is there going to be a strong enough incentive for them to, you know, start showering as a family, or, or, you know, whatever it is? You know, switching to gray water? You know, a lot, a lot of people want to do it just as an ethic. They want to live more sustainably. They want to, you know, recycle water. They want to do all that. So I, I guess I would, I would caution you that by having this rate, that we're suddenly going to lose, you know, our consumption's going to drop by twenty-five percent. Again, we think it's a goal. We do think it's a goal that we should have. We shouldn't, you know, if we were a for-profit water company, we probably would say, please, use as much water, you know.
We've got plenty, use it.
Install sprinkler systems, you know, water your lawn every day, you know, do all those things. But we're not a for-profit company. We're also, we also have that municipal, and we're also conserving a resource that is a resource we own. The water's not coming to us from somewhere. It's a resource we own, and we have to preserve and sustain.
Councilor Adams, you had a?
To me, it sounds like we want to, you know, it sounds like the equivalent to saying we want to, you know, lower your taxes and increase services, and that's a wonderful statement, and certainly a laudable goal, but just, it just doesn't seem reachable.
So I would, I would say that there's really no argument with the point. There's really no argument with the point. It was more valid probably ten years ago, if you look at some of MWRA's history in the greater Boston area. As a community, we're very efficient in terms of how we use water. And one of the gentlemen that spoke earlier said that the city won an award for a number of reasons. One of them is that we were below our target for water usage. So it's likely that we won't see a huge drop in water consumption within the city because of these changes, because a lot of people are conservation-minded as it is. And the other reason it was more important about ten years ago is, all your appliances and fixtures and things in homes now, they're a lot more efficient than they used to be. So if you go back ten or fifteen years, as people started to make improvements to their home, or new, or new structures were built, you know, there was a lot of water-saving elements built into buildings, businesses, homes, and there was a significant drop-off in water consumption in some, in some systems that saw that. But in terms of our curve within the city of Northampton, we're already on the downside of, of consumption. So whatever we see in this, I don't personally think is going to have a huge impact on the revenue. But the point is, it's perfectly valid, but I just don't think it's going to.
So our capacity for reduction, given our current state of affairs, is somewhat limited. We can't, we're not going to get so much better that that's going to be an insurmountal issue.
We're not concerned about the revenue, right.
I will only add that if you were at the hearing a year ago, you, there were a number of customers. They were people that lived in your ward. They were people.
Exactly.
On fixed incomes. They were people who said they make a conscious effort to try to conserve water, and they, you know, they did say that they felt like that, that those efforts should at least be factored in to, to this. So this at least offers some modest attempt to try to factor that in. Is it, but again, I think it has to be kept in perspective, as Jim mentioned.
Other questions from Councilor LeBarge? You all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Any members of the public that have a closing question? We've been, we're at two hours and fifteen minutes of scintillating television here, and we can keep going if people have more things they want to talk about, but.
Move to close.
We're, we're good? Everyone good for tonight?
One final statement. It wasn't.
Come up so we can hear you, because we probably won't hear you back that far.
I mean, we talked at the last meeting that there was a limited amount of people here, and that we hoped it would be advertised a little bit better. And in all honesty, I was looking out for it, and I had a hard time knowing that tonight was the night of the meeting. Deciphering it out of a, a statement in the newspaper that wasn't necessarily about this made that tougher. Actually, my wife was looking for me. She didn't find it. I reread it, said, oh, jeez, it says right there in the small print, there'll be a meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah. We did get some new people tonight, but we haven't had an overwhelming turnout. Well, we'll, we're, I guess we're to presume we can close this hearing.
We did alert the press. The press is here tonight. They, the last time. We did put so.
That's one improvement.
We did do social media. We did.
And this is a televised.
Yes.
This one is televised live. You've all been.
And I, and I say.
Pleasure being on live TV.
That's what I did. It's obviously a council hearing. I don't know what measures the council took.
No, and we'll, we'll take it back to the whole council, and if the council wants to have yet another hearing, we can do that. Yes, Fred?
Just one more thing. Maybe if you turn the lights down a little bit above the screen, we can see it.
See a little better?
Sure.
I agree.
Good. So a motion, if we're all set, to close the public hearing?
I just mentioned one other thing before you close. I'm sorry. The, there were, there were copies of the power.
Hand it out.
There were just, there were a couple of typos on one of the tables. It doesn't affect any of the.
Totals.
Calculations, but a couple of the CCFs on the, on the business comparison chart, it's been corrected, and it was corrected in the slide, but Pam printed these before we caught the corrections. So we will be posting this on our website. It's really, it's just a couple of typos, but it doesn't affect any of the calculations or any of that.
Which page is it?
It's on the page that is the customer impact, business compare, the comparison that has like Coopers and Faces and Joe's and things like that. There were a couple of just typos, but they weren't actually factored into the calculation.
But they could pull a correct one off the website.
Yes, the new ones on the website. And so it's really just that page that changed. That was the only page that had a correction.
It doesn't change the dollar amount.
It doesn't change the dollar amount. We had a, we had a typo on, the brewery you see up there has five-hundred-and-sixteen CCF. On your slide, it said twenty-sixty-two.